Two thousand and seven meeting of the Glendale City Council being called to order at 6:05 PM with a quorum. They were roll call for city council.
Council members Manukian, Najarian, Quintero.
Here.
Eusefian.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here. The flag salute tonight will be led by Councilmember Quintero on the occasion by City Clerk Ari Kosakian.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Character and Ethics Project word for the month of March is trustworthiness, and all Glendale residents, businesspeople, and stakeholders are encouraged to act in accordance to this in a manner emphasizing responsibility and dependability. Let us pray this evening so we may be granted strength and courage to deliberate and make decisions that will reflect our trustworthiness. Let us pray for the ability and wisdom to hold ourselves responsible at a higher standard than anybody expects for us. We are grateful for all that we have been provided, with which enables us to address and make the decisions that face us this evening. And lastly, please watch over our loved ones who are abroad serving in the military. We pray for their safety and swift return. Amen.
Thank you. May I have your report?
The agenda for the March thirteenth, two thousand and seven, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, March eighth, two thousand and seven, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Okay, here's what we're going to do tonight. After I bring forward the exchange students from Osaka, Japan, we will move eight D next. Okay. Per agreement I made with the public over the last few days that we would do that, so we could get that item out of the way. So with that, would you please bring the crew forward? Yes.
Mayor Weaver and City Council, I am very proud to represent Glendale High School here tonight in bringing the six exchange students, they're seventeen-year-olds from our sister city, Osaka, Japan, visiting with us for about three weeks from Nishan High School, and their English teacher, Naomi Hatta, who has been here before to Glendale, about ten years ago, and they will introduce themselves to you briefly.
Yeah, just come up and give your names.
I'm Naomi Hatta.
I'm Yuko Gudou.
I'm Saika Tzui.
My name is Yuki Shitashimi.
I'm Toyoko Nito.
I'm Toshiko Yahata.
I am Yumi Fujita.
Hmm, quite good. You don't dress like that in Japan, though, do you? This is just for show, right? For occasions? Sometimes like that. I was talking with them earlier. They had their first Mexican meal today or yesterday?
Yesterday.
First time. They don't have Mexican food in Osaka. I told them, open up establishment there. She liked the food. Just imagine the money she could make. And you've had pizza before. Osaka's missing out a lot of good foods over there. But, um, well, okay, they're being housed at Glendale High School with parents of Glendale High School students. We have four or five in the back that are helping. Yeah, hi, hi. Told them we'll get them a DVD of this, uh, of this evening so they can take that back to Osaka. Here's a-- they understand a little language, but not a lot. Do you think there's anything they'd like to say?
I don't think so. Naomi, did you want to say anything?
They don't want to sing, they don't want to dance? Yes. Okay, they're here for approximately three weeks, going back on the twenty-ninth.
Correct.
And they--
And they're attending student, uh, attending classes.
Come to my--
There's a terrific article in the news press today, and it explains how they are attending classes with students that, at Glendale High School, uh, core courses as well as some fun courses, even the cosmetology and culinary arts, as well as world history and English, and chemistry, and algebra. So we have a vast array for them and many, many activities for the next three weeks. We're keeping them busy, and the host families have been wonderful, and we have been getting together to party quite often as well.
And they're going to Disneyland--
Disneyland Saturday, of course.
Universal, The Grove. I was telling them, The Grove, heck, we're gonna have something that's four times bigger than The Grove here in another year's. So they should-- they're all juniors, so they should come back after they graduate, and the Grove, uh, the Americana brand will be done, and they can visit that. What else would you like to know, Mr. Starbird? They've received their gifts already, so they'll take back, along with the DVDs that we'll get for them. You hearing that, guys downstairs? One, two, three, four, five, six, eight, eight copies of DVD of this, so they'll have a nice souvenir to show their parents.
Thank you.
So keep working on your English. Go have a good meal. Try a different ethnic food this time. Okay, with that, we're gonna move to eight D.
Mr. Mayor?
Eusefian?
Uh, I'd just like to let you know that, according to my agenda, eight D is the last item. I just want to let the public know that I will be leaving the chambers at 6:30. I have a special meeting that I have set up a long time ago. I need to be there for at least two hours and then come back. I had no idea two of my colleagues were gonna miss this meeting. So I just want to let you know, so you guys don't get upset when you see me leaving the room. And Mr. City Attorney, you may want to see what happens when that--
Mr. Starbird?
Well, Mr. Mayor, that sets up an interesting circumstance, only because at that point, then you lose a quorum, um, and the, and the formal meeting then ends. You and Mr. Quintero can certainly continue to receive comments from the audience if it's your wish. Staff can go through the staff report. Hassan, about how long is the staff report?
It's about, um, I can tell you exactly how many slides.
Exactly fifteen, two per slide, thirty slides?
It's thirty slides.
So we might still be here at eight o'clock when Mr. Eusefian returns. But, uh, in any case, with the loss of Mr. Eusefian, you lose a quorum. Uh, we probably would stop televising under normal circumstance at that point, lest people think this is a formal meeting. And you can proceed then with, with what is not a formal city council meeting, but you can proceed with a discussion, with staff presenting information. You can certainly hear from the residents, the community that are here, but there won't be a record of the meeting. The purpose of our presentation this evening was to attempt to define, I guess, what I call the nature of the problem that we would want to attempt to solve through a view protection ordinance. For that purpose, frankly, having two of you doesn't quite achieve our purpose. We can certainly receive input from the two of you. It's not formal, but of course, it takes four votes eventually to adopt a view protection ordinance, so we'd need to come back again and likely do this again at a later time, but we can certainly have this run through if that's your wishes.
What I will propose to do, when we lose the quorum and the TV goes off, I'll ask you by a show of hands, do you want to go on and give two of us the input or wait for the others? Because with the majority gone, uh, staff is not exactly getting direction from the majority of the council, and I'll let you call it. We can call it off and go to dinner, and, or we can stay. I'll stay till midnight if I have to, but you have to understand-- Well, we'll discuss that at 6:30 between you and Quintero.
But, look, my feeling is, it needs to be televised, so there's a record of the comments from the--
If that's the way you feel, then--
City council.
I'd be standing alone, and that means probably at 6:30, we all go home. Uh, no, not right now.
Mr. Mayor, we should, we should point out, I think Scott would, would certainly point out, that it's, it's not inappropriate under the Brown Act to televise whatever this non-formal meeting would continue to be. It's just not generally our practice. If the city council's in a formal city council setting, then we televise the meeting. Otherwise, in the apps that we have generally turned off, the television lest people think it's a formal meeting. Because there aren't minutes at that point, there's not a recording of the meeting, uh, there's, there's nothing official to do. Now, again, we can televise it, but it's, it's an informal meeting of two council members and the community.
It has the same, from Mr. Mayor, it has the same functional equivalent as televising a meeting in your office, other than the fact that--
That'd be a new one.
--there are two of you here, sitting here. Really is, is, has the same force and effect of basically televising a meeting with an individual council member.
Don't worry, we don't have a quorum, we'll adjourn to my office, and we'll have a nice, good old party.
But you can do it here. You can certainly do it here.
Okay, so we got fifteen minutes. We'll start off and see where we go, and when we don't have a quorum, we'll talk again. So, Mr. Starbird, you're going to--
Let me ask Hassan Agani, acting director-- I'm sorry. You're right.
You read eight D into the record, please.
Eight D is acting-- eight D is acting director of planning regarding discussion of types and nature of view protection legislation, including options, PowerPoint presentation, and at eight D one is motion, directing staff.
Thank you. And with that, Mr. Starbird, you're going to, Mr. Agani?
I'm going to Hassan.
Who's going to--
Well, I think he's going to introduce--
Oh, this is a tag team.
Give the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm, um, I am going to introduce, start talking about the item, and here I have next to me Tim Foy and Wolfgang Kraus, both principal planners, who have actually put together a PowerPoint to follow up. There's quite a bit of discussion surrounding this, so I'm going to just get it started.
So, Agani, do you have copies of PowerPoint for us? It was passed out to us with a packet.
We have some extra copies here.
Oh, okay. Never mind, never mind. Right side, you see your color? Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Um, as you know, this, this item was brought to council recently by members of the community who are concerned about protection of views. Let me just say what we are hoping to achieve in tonight's study session. One was, uh, one is to examine Glendale's regulations in comparison with those of other cities. As you know, members of the community have identified other cities that have adopted view protection ordinances. So we have a number of regulations that, to a certain extent, address some of those, but not to the fullest extent. So we're going to compare our own regulations against those and identify options to address the issues that the community have raised, especially those that our current regulations fail to address sufficiently. And at the end, we will give you some options as to how we could address them and get some direction from council as to what steps to take next. Just, uh, just to, again, go step-by-step process. First, we'll go over the issues that have been raised by the community. Then we will look at practices from other cities, a number of specific cities that Tim Foy has identified. I think it'll be important to address the history of the hillside regulations and currently applicable ordinances and guidelines. It may appear that Glendale has never addressed views, except that all, there are so many issues surrounding, surrounding views, and Glendale has in fact been addressing a number of them for twenty years. It'll be important to address at least the ones we are addressing. And then, um, there are some more discussions being, uh, the planning commission is engaged in at this moment. I think it'll be important to address those. And then, in the end, we will get to what it is really that Glendale is not doing, and then the options. Next, please, Tim. So these are the issues that we have identified. We met with some members of the community after they came to the council, and we assembled the points that we think they wanted us to make sure to address. One is protection of views from intrusive buildings and/or vegetation, both downhill and uphill, protection of undeveloped open space, mansionization. A number of the issues were really about mansionizations, and both in terms of new buildings and additions, shadows, light, and air, privacy, architectural style, especially with regard to existing neighborhood character. And there was some, some, this whole issue of alternative ways of calculating FARs, which is something we are addressing in the hillside ordinance as well. And then, protection of trees in wooded areas, as it applies to new, especially new projects or additions to existing homes. And intrusive signage is another thing that some community members have raised in terms of what signage can do to their views. And then, of course, there's this whole larger issue of property rights and how we address those. We have borrowed some slides from community members that they presented, so this is, uh, this is to the extent that they could cover it, and this is views downhill, existing view on the slide to the, in the slide on the left, and then proposed view, if you were to juxtapose the drawing, you know, on the same slide. This is one example of a type of view that we might want to address, and if you go to the next one. This one is really potent with a number of issues. Depending on what you might want to address, the word "view" could take many different meanings. Are we talking about the view from where the camera is sitting and viewing, looking out in the hill? Are we talking about the loss of perhaps open space and a barren hill that is now the, the subject of development? That's one way to look at it. And then there's this whole other way. There are several large homes there. Are we discussing mansionization and the size of the homes that are there? Are we talking about the relationship between those homes to each other and how one might impact the views of the other house? So this is not to critique it, but to say that this slide has raises more questions and answers for us. And that was why we thought it was important to get into some of the things we have addressed in the past, and some of the things we are currently addressing, and, and get to the points that we have not been discussing. Tim, if you would start, please.
Sure. This here, um, the next couple of slides will focus just on a really traditional view ordinance, even though Hassan just mentioned the many issues that seem to be falling under this general umbrella. So, uh, these are what kind of views are protected by different cities. These are the, I guess, seven cities we looked at. And it varies. Laguna Beach protects all views. Some are very restricted. Um, I won't go over each one, I think they're pretty obvious, but it's something, you know, we would have to think about, toss around, decide on, were we to adopt a view protection ordinance?
Mr. Quintero?
But you didn't, uh, check with the cities whether they have anti-mansionization ordinances, because, for instance, Beverly Hills certainly does. So that you didn't check, just a view ordinance.
Right, this was just a view ordinance, yes. I'm sure they all have NOT coverage or FAR regulations, same as we do. And we couldn't report on that further.
Did you also check to see if they have an extensive design review boards for residential that we have?
Um, it varies. Some of them--
But once again, Beverly Hills does, for sure.
Wait, wait, get out of control. Let me, let me recognize who's talking. Uh, Mr. Eusefian?
Uh, I don't know what Beverly Hills does. I don't, I haven't done business in Beverly Hills except for commercial work. What I want to know is from staff to do research, to find out all of these cities that you've listed in here, whether they have a design review, whether they have an anti-mansionization ordinance, whether they have a hillside ordinance, and their design review ordinance, do they do their design review by staff? Or do they actually have a commission that is appointed by the council, and they put out all kinds of notification of five hundred feet, and then people come down, and they speak about it, and so on and so forth? Most of the cities that I have dealt with, they have design review, it's done by staff. It is not going out there, it is not televised, there is no notice out there, there is no postings. So I think if we're gonna compare things to see whether or not we're not doing something, let's find out what is it that others are not doing, and maybe instead of doing all of these things, they have a view ordinance to cover some of those issues.
Mr. Starbird?
Well, Mr. Mayor, the, the, the comments from both Mr. Quintero and Mr. Eusefian point out, I think, part of the challenge that the staff has had, which is part of the purpose of this evening's meeting, ostensibly to talk about view protection ordinance, but meaning a rather broad array of issues to different people. I mean, neighborhood compatibility is something you've talked about in a different setting, hillside development standards, FAR, you've talked about in a different setting. And going, going into those areas will open us much farther than the traditional view protection will, but that's part of this evening's meeting.
Maybe what you're gonna end up having to do, Hassan, is do a number of metrics is which ones have a view, design review, um, and FAR, whatever, to see comparisons in more than one category, because I think we've all agreed, any view protection ordinance is but one piece of the puzzle to solve the problems that every community has.
Right. And-- I just want to say, I did make it very clear when this came up, that we should also look at the mansionization aspect--
Right.
--of this issue. I made it very clear, so it's not like you're hearing it for the first time.
Oh, no, no.
If you checked the record, I made it very clear that evening.
So, Mr. Mayor, and actually, the, we have heard those comments, and it was not like we didn't hear them or we ignored them. I think one of the things we wanted to illustrate today was that there is a perception that by, by simply identifying and introducing a view protection ordinance, we are going to address many issues. I think one of the, we have not even started critiquing only the view protection ordinances that these cities have adopted, to see whether or not they're effective, let alone get deeper into further analysis of what other practices they do have or don't have that we might have. For example, we do have design review of single-family homes that many cities do not have. So, and then, at the end, when Tim starts introducing options, one of, depending on what level of analysis you want us to, to go into, we could, we could go further and further into that level of research.
And the further you go into detail, the longer out it is before there is an ordinance in front of us.
That's right.
So everybody understands.
That's right.
Okay, continue.
Okay, well, again, this is strictly on, you know, very narrow idea of view protection, but, uh, this is a summary of what other cities do. Beverly Hills has a specific measuring point, and they do require story polls when there is a hearing required. Pasadena's is not used that much. They include landscaping, and they define that the view is measured from the primary living area.
Could you, Mr. Mayor--
Mr. Eusefian?
Could you please talk about what you're talking about? Because that, that TV screen is so small, nobody can read it.
That's true.
We may be able to read it, but the audience out there don't.
Yeah, thank you.
So please read that.
Okay, Beverly Hills, uh, their view is measured from six feet above the level pad of neighboring houses within three hundred feet. That's as, uh, you know, the house behind you, say. You would go to six feet above the level pad of that house and then see what the, if the view is obstructed.
Mm-hmm.
And the view in Los Angeles Basin, it's not every view, and they do, uh, requires a story poll to be constructed when there is a hearing, and we have, uh, next slide shows some story polls. This is actually in Rancho Palos Verdes. It just is a demonstration of how much a view will be blocked. And, okay, then, Pasadena's ordinance says, avoid blocking views to the maximum extent feasible as determined by the review authority. And I will note that that type of language is pretty typical. There, you know, there's no mathematical formula here. No one says X number of degrees. Pasadena includes landscaping. Um, the view there is defined as being from a primary living area, that is a living room, family room, a patio, but not a bedroom or kitchen. And in hillside areas, it requires story polls.
What do you mean by landscaping? You're talking about trees?
Yes, sir.
So if a tree is obstructing your view, they will require you to cut the tree?
My, I don't have this memorized. I believe that Pasadena, Pasadena's ordinance focuses on planting plans for new construction. I believe that this--
Okay. So if there's an existing tree there, Pasadena's not gonna require you to go chop off your oak tree because somebody else's view is being obstructed?
Yeah, I believe so. I'll check on that, but I believe that's right.
Because it'll be contrary to what we're trying to do last week. We're trying to save them, and in this one, we're just talking about cutting it off.
Yeah, I know. All right. Um, in Laguna Beach, they preserve views as much as possible. Again, as I said, judgment kind of language. New dwellings should have access to views similar, uh, to those views enjoyed from exist, by existing dwellings. They note in their ordinance that preserving views and privacy may conflict. And I think that's, would be perhaps a case of if, oh, someone was building next to you and you wanted them to set their house back, or to set their second story back, so your view wasn't obscured, when that second story being set back now looks into your backyard more.
Okay.
Malibu actually has a cap on the size of new homes, of eleven thousand, one hundred and seventy-two square feet. They protect views of the ocean--
Wait, wait, that's the--
Eusefian?
Yes.
That's the size of a lot?
No, of the building.
So, so, so Malibu says you can't build anything over eleven thousand square feet?
That's right.
That's the cap?
One hundred and seventy-two. How they got--
What is the hundred and seventy-two?
I don't know. I don't know.
So they protect larger views of the ocean from private property, or they have certain designated scenic roads and protect views of the hilltops from those scenic roads. Story polls are required, must be certified by a surveyor. Rancho Palos Verdes probably has the strictest. They have a height limit, I believe, of sixteen feet. If you go, uh, above that, it goes to planning commission review. Story polls are required.
Before he leaves.
And they do have strict limits on vegetation. One of our staff members used to work in Rancho Palos Verdes and told us that for a town of only sixteen thousand people, they have two employees full-time enforcing vegetation limits.
Okay. Are you about ready, Mr. Eusefian?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Okay, we're gonna break from here to get one item on, because it's an emergency one. We have to get that item done, and that's the light for the Little League fields. We gotta get that going, we can't delay a week on that one. So would you read, uh, eight B into the record?
Eight B is director of Parks, Recreation, and Community Services regarding design and installation of light standards at Pelencone, Dunsmore, and Babe Herman Little. Ball fields at eight B one is resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing city manager to enter into a contract with Electro Construction Company for an amount not to exceed five hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Move eight B one.
Second.
Any cards?
Eight C?
Eight.
Eight B.
Eight B? No. Okay, just, just so the public knows, one of the light poles on one of the fields in the high winds leaned. We went out and found that the foundation was eroded. We checked all the light standards on all the fields and found, I think, thirty-seven that were corroded. The reason you couldn't see them is they were buried down under the ground. We did not on a routine basis go out and excavate around the poles to find out if they were eroded, they were put in thirty, forty years ago. The dis inspection showed it, so we're doing this emergency contract now, so we can have the lights in with new standards, with better lighting, within high May, mid-May or whatever. Is that right, George? Okay, that's it. No further discussion, roll call, please.
Council members Manukian, Najarian, Quintero.
Yes.
Eusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. Okay, thank you. Now, did you not have a quorum anymore? Ha, ha, this is another new one for me. Ten years, never had this one.
The meeting will essentially be declared adjourned by the city clerk, the city count. These, the two members remaining can continue to have essentially an informal discussion with staff and with the audience, and people are free to come and go as they would--
And we can leave it on TV?
--in a meeting with council members. If you choose to do that, my recommendation is that it may, my, my concern is that it may confuse the public that this is an actual meeting of the council in which you're actually taking testimony on an item, because we normally do not televise what is essentially the functional equivalent of meetings with less than a quorum of the council members.
Mr. Quintero's already expressed his opinion, yes.
Well, what I'd like to do, I think, is to go ahead and finish the staff presentation and then hold, and televise it, and then hold off on the public comment when the meeting is rescheduled.
Will the public accept that if, next week? We shove everything else and we put this on next week, if we, if we have to? I mean, they waited long enough. Well, hold on, we're checking, we're checking. Just, just wait, let me get that question answered first.
We lose our planning staff next week.
We lose them?
We lose our director of planning next week.
They're retiring?
No.
Oh.
But he, he can't be here.
Another job?
He can't be here.
Okay, so it'll be two weeks out?
And I will tell you that your March twentieth meeting is very heavy, including a noticed public hearing on three thirty-seven North Cedar Street, the planning board's determination of an environmental impact report. So we were anticipating a fairly long--
And the twenty-ninth? Are we gonna wait for the new council to come up in--
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh? Yeah.
Certainly much easier on the 27th, if that's your direction.
Okay, okay, public, I don't wanna get into 50 people doing it, but do you want to do it as Mr. Quintero suggested, go through the rest of these slides, so you can at least see what staff is telling you, which might help you, when it does come back, to know what has been said, what we've got? Staff has been working on this for weeks. At least you'll have a little input. And then, at least I would recommend, we go home and come back either on the 27th or after the new council is on board. One of the two. Okay, who's this? Okay, Mr. Hoppen, are you speaking for the coordinating council? Wait, 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 wait. Number one, are we adjourned now?
Yes, you are adjourned, you have no quorum.
Okay, so therefore, you don't have to get up and come up, just tell me from your seat, I can hear you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, they can put that up. So, all of you'll have access to that.
The TV should remain on.
So, kill it off now? Okay, folks?
And let me just say, I apologize.
Now, this is not fair.
In the six years that I've been on this council, this has never happened. It's beyond belief.
Mr. Najarian, wait, no. All I know is Mr. Najarian, it's in Washington, DC, funded for the city, pre-scheduled a month or so ago, so legit, legit all the way.
Right this moment.
No, no, we go, he won't be back for at least two hours. I'm not gonna recess for an hour and a half and then come back. And then do that, and then the regular council meeting too? I'm not gonna be here till two in the morning. I know I have a whole stack, but you might as well go home. No. Let's go home. The new date, 27th. Do you know where he is?